All right, call in to order the Malibu Planning Commission regular meeting for Monday, December 17th, 2018. Could we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Jennings. Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Vice Chair Yaring.
Here.
Chair Marx.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Did our new council member step out? Where's Mikey? Oh, there is. Okay, here. He was hiding. Mikey, do you mind leading us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, if you couldn't tell, we are, our flag is not standing here right now. Yeah, so we all just looked to the area it used to be.
Flag was the same place as the firing.
Okay, can we, approval of the agenda?
Remove the agenda be approved as staff recommends.
Second.
We have one item that I need to change our recommendation on.
Thank you.
Item 3B1, there was a problem with how the agenda was posted for 3B1. The project description is incorrect, so we need to repost this item on the next agenda for January 10th.
So we will not be able to vote on 3B1 tonight?
Yeah, so I amend my motion to continue item 3B1 to January 10th.
Do we have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, let's see, oh, could we have your report on the posting of this agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on December 6th, 2018.
Thank you very much, and I believe we have a ceremonial presentation today. So how do we manage this one again? Do you just?
I can do it from this, from here. Just stand there. Thanks.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, John Seibert.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will diligently serve as planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will diligently serve as planning commissioner of the city of Malibu.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will.
Go ahead.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the state of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I'm about to enter.
Thank you.
As I told you earlier, I took this same oath 14 years ago, and Marine Corps buddy of mine was sitting in the audience, and I said, "The first time I took an oath like this, they gave me an M1." I'm not sure I need that.
I can give you a nice pen, but that's about it.
Thank you. All right, so welcome, and.
Presentation from Mikey.
Do you want one, Mikey? We could put something together. No, okay.
We're gonna miss you, Mikey.
Yeah, definitely.
That's all we got.
Thank you. And you're onto bigger and better things, I guess you could say. So next up, any communication from the public? We have one speaker slip from Mikey. All right, well, come on up. You have a three minutes, sir.
Yeah, three minutes is plenty for you guys. I really just came to kind of officially say goodbye to the planning commission. Almost seven years, and a very important seven years for me as a person, and attempting to learn a lot about planning issues. I definitely was appointed with limited knowledge, coming straight from Public Works Commission, and I just want to say that I appreciate working with every single one of you. It's meant a lot to me, and I've learned a lot. We haven't always agreed, but we've all cared, and that is most important to me. We all engage in the conversation. Everyone up here I worked with was prepared, paid attention, had knowledge, and that's, to me, the best we can do. I mean, that's the process. Working with city staff, always amazing, great, and just an incredible process that's so important to our community. I know the planning department and planning commission's been through a lot of interesting issues, some very difficult issues. I know our codes are not as black and white as maybe I would like. I know they're very gray. I've talked about that a lot. Their difference between the words of the code, interpretation of the code, and the intent of the code. All very important and fuzzy areas of the code. So I know you guys have a huge amount coming before you and how this works out. I know we're bringing in other planners, it looks like, to help out with the disaster, but obviously we've been in a critical time in Malibu's history, and we, that is no less today, and that will be no less for quite a while. So I, I thank you all for your service. For myself, I've got a big decision to make on my planning commission, and I have not decided yet. I'm gonna make sure I make a good decision, and I'll tell you this, if my planning commissioner or any of my other commissioners doesn't work out, I'm changing them. So, and for whatever that means. It's important to me. All the commissions are important, but planning number one, and having the right person with the right frame of mind and attention to detail. Oh my gosh, I can go three minutes. Only 26 more seconds. So, thank you, and learned a lot once again. Importantly, learned how to communicate better, learned how the planning process works, and everyone here was very helpful, and I just want to say thank you and good luck.
Thank you.
Don't leave.
No, not yet, not yet. You gotta stay, we gotta pay it back. So take a seat. Sorry, we at least have our comments. So, let's see, with that, if you don't mind starting, that'd be great to hear from you.
Well, I, it's interesting to be back on the planning commission after all these years, and it's really, I recognize it's an interim position, a surrogate essentially for Mikey since he got elected and had to leave this, and so I'll do, try to do what I can to make sure that you're comfortable with the decisions we make over the next couple of meetings. The January 10th one's gonna obviously be a fairly important one, and good luck with finding your next planning commissioner.
Sure. Well, Mikey, congratulations. I don't, I don't really envy you moving into the job at this particular time. I mean, the post-fire sessions for the city council, period is gonna be very rough, and you're gonna have huge challenges facing you, so good luck to you. I know you'll, you'll, you'll give it a thoughtful job, and that's all anybody can expect. I want Bonnie to, I'm sure you're gonna have a couple of remarks to make, but I want you to particularly tell the public what's gonna be going on tomorrow at the special meeting, the issues that are gonna be in the discussion. That it's a meeting, because it's a special meeting, it hasn't been given wide publicity, and there's some really critical determinations that are coming before the city council tomorrow. So I hope you'll explain to the public what's going on. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza, do you mind?
Well, first I want to congratulate Mikey for getting elected, and I remember when Mikey came on planning commission, he really wanted to learn, and he actually read the stuff, and read the, read the codes and tried to follow them, and we disagreed on some things, but in general, he always had a sound reason for doing something, I think. And so I think that's very important, and he did a good job. I just hope you don't forget us on things like mansions, so we don't have to sit here for hours and hours discussing things that aren't clear, because it is, is a waste of time. And I hope you don't have to wait eight years to get 35 plaques. I wish we could give you a plaque or something. This is the first ceremonial presentation we've had in decade, well, four or five years. So if we could give you a plaque, maybe with a big candle on it or something, we would, but thanks. And I want to welcome John. I went to many meetings when he was on the planning commission, lobbed some bombs, and he lobs them back, but now we have a majority of gray hairs, so it's different.
I'm working on it.
Yeah. Oh, there was another thing I was gonna ask. Bonnie, I know we, I know you're buried now, and I understand you're, you're thinking about subbing out some of the work for the department, but I do hope we have some of our long-term projects continue, and they just don't get shut off. You know, signs and, and mansions and things like that, because they go on for decades, and it gets to be a problem, because everything's changed before you change anything. That's it.
Vice Chair Yaring?
Mikey, when I came on, the first thing you told me, you said, "Look, to be a good commissioner, go out and visit every site," and you were absolutely correct. And whatever success or luck I've had as a result of being up here is a result of that, that advice, and I have followed it religiously, and I will continue to do that. So thank you very, very much, and I do wish you the very best. For all the people who, you know, had the misfortune of getting hurt in the fires, you know, I've talked to enough people that have lost their houses to recognize that, you know, I just don't have any words to measure up to the impacts that you guys have had. What I can say, and I think I can say for all the commission, whatever role we're gonna play in this rebuild process, I think I can assure you that whatever we do, we're gonna try and make it as painless and as rapid as possible for you to go out and try and rebuild. So we'll see where that takes us. Couple questions for Bonnie. Bonnie, at the last roundtable, we asked Reva if you guys were doing sort of an inventory of the burnt houses with a profile that says, you know, this is when they were built, this is the ones, you say you're doing, you are doing something like that?
The Craig George and some additional, his building inspector team, as well as additional inspectors from the county, have gone through and inspected all of the properties in the burn areas, and so we have an inventory of properties that were burned. It's, it's, the list does change a little bit as, you know, because there are some parts of properties you can't see from the street, for example, and you may discover things later on that were not, that were affected, that were not visible from the streets. So the list could evolve a little bit. We're in the process of assisting people with public records for purposes of documenting what their previous footprint and square footage and all those things were. One of the things that I'm going to do also is, it's something the county's doing, I think is a great idea, is get records directly from the tax assessor. That will also help with that, and we, we all have discussed that the online information about square footage can be different than what's actually on the ground, but there are sketches that the assessor staff complete when, when new parts of structures are permitted, and so those paper records are also available, and so I'm working to get those on hand so that we can help people. We're gonna work through as many creative means as we can to help people establish what their footprint and envelope is.
Yeah, that was my, the more we can detail we have about what they had, you go after with a rifle versus a shotgun and make our life a little bit easier.
Exactly.
Okay, next one. I know the city is working on new rules to talk about how, how houses are gonna have to be hardened for fires, okay? And I have no idea when we're gonna see that. So I'm just wondering, in the interim, all right, I mean, is, are you guys thinking about doing anything to deal with some of the houses that are coming in front of us now? And I mean, just give you an example. One of the houses we got tonight has got a swimming pool. Now, maybe we can't force them to put a pump in, you know, because you gotta get a permit or something, and I don't want to do anything that sort of delays, but maybe we can have them at least build a foundation for a pump, right? So somewhere down the line, there's another, one of the houses tonight, it's got palm trees all over the land. Well, palm trees, I think we demonstrated, those are not, so I mean, just, are you guys doing anything to look at that? Or do you have any suggestions what we should do up here as we look at these houses?
We are thinking about those things, and I think it would be a good idea for that to be a discussion item with the, with the planning commission going forward, because there are definitely things that can make the community more fire resilient. We'll be working closely with the building department as well on those things.
Yeah, I just, you know, I'd be, I think we'd be remiss if we didn't at least address that in some way, and so, anything you can give us would be great. Okay, last one is my friends at SoHo. Over the, over the weekend, we got the sixth audio complaint, audio visual complaint of those guys having amplified music. Went to Doug, and he suggested we, he was gonna visit them today. Do you have any update of what we're doing, gonna do with these guys? And if we, I know you're gonna bring it in front of us.
Yes.
Sometime, sooner you, I just want to, make sure you get it here before I go out and get hit by a car or something, because I want to be here when that shows up.
Yes. Doug is working with them, I believe, I think he's meeting with them tomorrow. I think today was, was busy recovering from the weekend and everything like that. He is meeting with them tomorrow. We will be bringing, we were supposed to have an item for you on December 18th. No, that, no, that would be disappointing. Things have gotten a little shuffled around.
Yes.
As a result of the fire, so we don't have that for you tonight, but we will have that for you early in the new year.
Okay. I mean, I, I think Doug was gonna try and get back to the gentleman who wrote the email to him.
Yes, he did.
Because, you know, what we're doing, we're teaching SoHo to tell us to go take a hike every time, and that's a bad lesson to be teaching the community.
Well, the, yeah, the amendment that they're processing would cure these things, I, the noise issues, and that's what we want to bring before you to have that evaluated and determine if that is an amendment to their CUP that, that you're willing to make or not. But in the meantime, they're not supposed to be doing that. You're exactly right, and Doug is gonna take enforcement.
Think he can stop them?
Um, I, yes, I do.
Okay, good. That's all we got.
We had a couple of follow-up from Commissioner Seibert and Mazza.
Yeah, just one comment, Steve, with respect to the issues with pools. Back some years ago, we required them to have a connection to the pool with a hydrant on the street, and some of the houses that were built in that timeframe or remodeled in that timeframe have those hydrants, and I don't know what happened to that. So it'd be worth taking another look at it. You know, it, I don't know if it necessarily had a pump, but I remember these coming before us, and they had to put in a, essentially a pipe and a hydrant on the street, and we have a, we have three, I think, on Zumares that were built in that timeframe. So I don't know, maybe you can take a look at that, see what that was.
Thank you. Commissioner Mazza?
Just a comment on what John just said. We do have them on Zumares. The only fire truck that ever came to Zumares did not have a pump big enough to pump a pool, so individual pumps count. In fact, the house next door to the pump, the pool, burned down. That brings me to, just a process question. City council tomorrow is gonna consider letting everybody put trailers on burnouts, and our code, the LIP, says, "Ah, you gotta have a building permit first before you can issue a permit for a trailer." Obviously, that doesn't work. Is, is, has anybody talked to the coastal commission? They gonna look away on some of these rules?
So the, the trailer temporary housing placement is a critical issue right now. Everybody knows that. The code currently allows for, in, in the event of a disaster, for a trailer or a mobile home, temporary trailer or mobile home to be placed on a property during the process of reconstruction. So the short answer is, no, you don't have to have your, your rebuild construction permit in place. This is meant to be housing available to property owners while they're getting all that stuff together. So we are proposing to make some clarifications and adjustments to the, the language in the code that will benefit people affected by the fire. Number one, we want to, currently the code reads that trailers can be placed for a maximum of two years with six-month extensions at the discretion of the planning director. We don't think that's enough time, two years, so we would like to extend that. By the way, this language is already in the LCP, and it's already in the local coastal program, I mean, in the municipal code. So we'll make the same changes in both documents. So we're proposing to extend that period to four years and then clarify how extensions would be granted. Let's see, and then we're also proposing to make some other changes to the code, which I can talk about in more detail in a moment. Does that answer your questions about that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I was gonna go to the meeting tomorrow. I just wondered the process with the coastal.
Yeah, so, but, but mainly the item related to trailers that's on the agenda tomorrow night has to do with waiving fees for allowing the placement of those. So that's the item that the council will take up tomorrow. I think they're also gonna be, in the future, looking at other types of fees that can be adjusted or waived in conjunction with the rebuilding process, but tomorrow it's just related to placement of a trailer. There will be fees, there's a review from planning, which is not a very detailed review. It's basically, "Show us where on your property, and we'll bless that." And then there, you will need, anybody placing a trailer will need to go to the building safety counter, and you will need to be able to demonstrate that your onsite wastewater treatment system is functional, and the way to do that is to hire a, one of the city's registered wastewater practitioners. There's a list on our website to evaluate your system and prepare a short report that the city environmental health administrator would review and sign off that, yes, this works. You'll also need to have a temporary power pole placed, so that involves a little bit of coordination with Southern California Edison, and I think an electrical permit through building safety division. And then finally, a connection to potable water is the other thing. So basically, your utilities will need to be demonstrated. So those aren't really planning issues so much as building department and, and these other agencies, but we're working on getting a streamlined process together so that you can do that in a one-stop-shop kind of way, rather than having to go around all over the place.
As I remember the fire that burned down La Costa, the council waived permit fees for the actual house for a period of two years, I think. Is that contemplated? And the other, second question is, as I remember, they did it because FEMA, FEMA ended up paying them in the long run.
My understanding is that the city was not able to get any reimbursement for the fee waivers, but, so I'm not, I'm not sure what the, I think the council is looking at different options, but I don't know what really is kind of floating around out there at this point.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Yeah. One of the critical questions that remains, and has, as far as I know, not been decided, is whether people will be allowed to put a temporary structure on the property prior to, after the hazmat clearance, but prior to the cleaning of the property as required by, by the county. Now, the county's Cal recycle program says that they're gonna start in January and maybe go through April, but that's sort of, yeah, maybe, and contracts haven't been let yet, so nobody really knows what the timeframe is going to be. So my question is, if there's sufficient area on the property where, where a temporary structure can be put without interfering in the, in the burned area, will that be allowed, or is, or is the cleaning of the property going to be required before a temporary structure will be permitted?
My understanding is that the property must be, have that phase-two clearance done before any permits would be issued for a placement of a structure.
I think it also, that might stem from the county health commissioner's declaration also. I think they were, it might have been addressed in there as well.
Anything else? Okay. All right, so my turn. Nope, I haven't gone yet. So first off, former commissioner and now councilman Pearson, thank you for everything, and congrats in the new spot. I do still want to take, take a ride with you, as I mentioned before, like months ago, things got a little busy, but I do want to take a drive and just kind of pick your brain on that drive as well, is just kind of check some things out together. Also, what else did I want to say here? Oh, I really liked what you said after you were sworn in at the city council, your first city council meeting. I, I mean, everything was from the heart, and I really hope that we're able to help in any way we can to get everything you were thinking of done, as you were kind of talking through, you know, your experience with the fire and what you're seeing ahead of us as a city. So, you know, I really liked what you had to say in your opening comments there, and, you know, if there's something I can do to help you personally or whatever that comes to mind to figure something out, just ping me and, you know, we'll work on it. Otherwise, for, kind of for everyone, you know, after, after the fire, we went to the back of Ramirez Canyon to take a look at just what things looked like back there. One thing we realized in our canyon is there's already about four to six feet of debris that's filled up our, much of our watered, you know, areas, the creek there, and just looking at it realistically, you know, if, if some large rainfall fell on that like 1,500-foot-high, you know, canyon that runs above us, it could be catastrophic to our neighborhood. So just everybody who can hear me, if, if you live in the low-lying areas near canyon floors, just be very mindful. Whenever there's a large rainfall, consider just proactively leaving your home for that night, or whatever day, whatever it is. Just seeing what's already come off the hills, and talking with representative from the National Park Service, the opinion is right now that these lighter rains we've had have brought a lot of the mass down, which will be, will help us, but if there's a large event defined as rainfall of more than one inch per hour for any duration of more than about 15 minutes, that can lead to just a complete loss of all the hillsides and everything. So if you're, if you live in the lower-lying areas, just be mindful of that and, and keep it in mind. Also, I was talking with Bonnie a bit on this earlier, kind of plays into some of the questions that Commissioner Jennings had. For those impacted that have lost their residences, obviously there are rules that are coming into place as to how to clear the property, et cetera. For those of us who live near those properties, if we, is there a way that we can be informed when a given structure is going to be cleared, so that if we choose to be away from the debris removal, we could leave our residence as well? Any, any insight on that, Bonnie?
I don't, I don't know of a process that's in place right now to make that happen, but this, all of this stuff has been evolving, and the state's been, the state and county have been working closely with the city, and so I'm happy to ask that question and see what we can find out, because I know that's a big concern, because the debris is, is something to, to worry about.
I know a little bit more. I talked to the guys at Cal recycle yesterday, and they are gonna go location, area by area, and I think they're planning on focusing on the, by the high school first, by the school, and they're planning, I mean, it's, it's, they're planning on giving 24 to 48 hours notice, which sounds thin, but that's what they say they can do, and they're hoping the homeowner will meet them on the site, and they anticipated taking 90 days total, which seems amazing. I don't know how they can do it that fast, but that's what they said to me yesterday.
Very good, thank you. And I completely agree with what Steve was saying also, just as many things, as many of these things that we can make as painless as possible, obviously is the goal, and then just keeping the information to everybody impacted as we, as we go. So I also just wanted to offer you, Bonnie, I'm okay, I can manage data pretty well, so if you need some, somebody to help kind of grind numbers or something, or put data together for, to tell a story, feel free to ping me on that as well.
Okay.
Help where I can. And with that, I'm gonna close the public comment unless there's anything else anyone wants to bring up. I kind of kept this open intentionally, because there was a lot of back and forth, and then I'm gonna hand off to Bonnie and Trevor. But is there, does anywhere else in the public want to come forward on anything that came up during the conversation so far, or anything specific we'd want answered tonight? Okay, I'm gonna close the public comment and come back to Bonnie.
Thank you, Chair Marx. First, I just want to say thank you to Commissioner Pearson. We. It's been a pleasure to work with you. We look forward to working with you. I'm sorry, I'm still calling you commissioner. I apologize. I'm looking forward to working with you, Councilmember Pearson, on this new journey and I'm excited about all the things in front of us. It's going to be challenging, but I think we'll be able to get a lot of good things done. And then I would like to offer my condolences to everybody affected by the fire. I know this has been an unprecedented, just crazy, terrible time. And we're here to help you in whatever way we can, recover, rebuild, just whatever we can do. Please don't hesitate to call on us. A lot of people seem to still be finding out about all the resources and things that are available. For example, the city has a fire rebuild counter here at City Hall that is staffed. Whenever City Hall is open, we will help you. It's staffed with a planner and the planners are very knowledgeable about the rebuild process and we will help you with whatever we can in terms of questions, where to start, how to place a trailer, things like that. And whatever we don't know the answer to, we're happy to try to help you figure that out. Records, as we talked about a little bit earlier, are a big part of this whole process as far as permitting history and information to establish what your building envelope was so that you can move forward with your rebuild. And that's another thing that we're happy to help with. We've had so far about two, over 200 meetings with people at our fire rebuild counter. We're also staffing at the disaster recovery center, which is at the Malibu courthouse. That's now being run by FEMA. It was being run by the county, but now FEMA is running it. And it is a great place to touch base with a lot of different agencies that are, that offer resources and can answer questions about things. I think Commissioner Jennings has been there. I don't know if he has comments on that. So I recommend anybody that's embarking on the recovery process to visit there. You can register with FEMA and ask questions about debris removal and things like that, among many other things. The disaster recovery center is open from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. every day except Sunday. In terms of other things that we're working on, we are, this is one of the, this is something that we'll be bringing to you at your next meeting on January 10th. We're working on the amendment I mentioned earlier about temporary trailers and making adjustments to that. Another code amendment item that we are working on is to create a minor CDP process. There, I think there's a big opportunity now and just in general to make it easier for people to replace and/or upgrade their onsite wastewater treatment systems and the full CDP process, even the administrative CDP process that we currently have, you know, as you're familiar with, that gets reported to you. There's a lot of hurdles for someone to jump through for something that we want to encourage them to do. I think there are some other things that would fit well under a minor CDP, such as slight adjustments to the siding of someone's fire rebuild, if it's beneficial from a code standpoint, like moving it further away from the bluff. I don't think we want to penalize people for making adjustments like that. Let's see, what else? Those are the main amendments that we're working on. We're meeting with coastal commission staff later this week. They're actually coming to Malibu. That's a very nice gesture. So I'm hopeful that they will be receptive and collaborative with us on moving these things forward. Let's see. The council meeting on tomorrow is a special council meeting. It's going to be here in the council chambers. It starts at 3:00 in the afternoon. And there are, it focuses on fire-related issues. The first, the, one of the major items is the city council would be considering opting into Los Angeles County's fire debris removal program. And that's the program that we've been talking about where the county will be coordinating with CAL OES, which is Operation of Emergency Services, on debris removal with the county in a program that can be done at no cost to the property owner. Or the separate option is where a property owner chooses to undertake the debris removal, his or herself. At any rate, the council has to adopt an ordinance in order to participate in that program. So that is, that's the reason for this being in a, kind of in a special emergency meeting to get that adoption done so the debris removal process can move forward. The other, another item is waiving fees for placement of temporary trailers that I touched on earlier. And then there are two additional items that council members asked to be placed on the agenda in order to get consensus from other council members about coming back with a more detailed item. The first is Mayor Mullen has asked, former Mayor Mullen has asked for a disaster response and recovery task force. So the council will consider establishing that task force. And then Mayor Wagner has asked for an item on Conex containers. These are the big shipping container things that can be outfitted with different configurations inside, whether it's office or storage or housing. So he has asked, he's asking for consensus on an item to study that. Are there any other questions that I can answer about anything fire-related or tomorrow's agenda?
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Well, I, with regard to Mayor Wagner's proposal, these are largely being considered for emergency alternatives to trailers or mobile homes. So how long do you think the process might take, considering the fact that I'm considering using them? How long is it going to be before I'll know whether I can do this or not?
Well, any, there's some flexibility about what can be placed on a temporary basis. So the key word is temporary. And if we can make it fit under our existing code or under the adjustments that we're making to the code about the temporary housing placement, then that could potentially be done within that amendment timeframe.
So you might be able to say, give an expansive definition of mobile home or trailer to include other temporary structures?
Right.
And then that would be effective almost immediately, right? Because it would be a staff determination.
Right.
Thank you.
So to kind of play that back, then, I mean, a logical extension would be kind of any structure that would be able to be removed within that four-year window, something along those lines. So even if it were, say, a manufactured home or something that were temporarily put there, those kinds of edges could be explored?
Yeah, we just want to make sure that it's temporary. Like if it's permanently attached to a foundation, that would be problematic.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
One last. Jeff, you went through the FEMA process. I spoke to a couple residents who seemed to go in there and left feeling confused. It took, is that clear enough, you think, for everybody to go through? Or do you think help would be beneficial?
I, speaking strictly for FEMA, I think that there is, at least in my case, there were some communication problems in terms of what FEMA wanted me to, what additional information FEMA wanted me to supply and how to supply it. The initial contact was, I did online and they got back to me very promptly and said, no, you don't qualify for it. And then they got, then there was other communication saying, well, please send us this and please send us that. So it was a little confusing, to be honest with you.
The only reason I ask that, I heard the same thing. Pepperdine, Pepperdine's got a law school with all these, I mean, and they're supposed to be an advocacy group. It may be worth just touching base with them and see if they can provide us some additional, you know, people that can sit there and sort of walk people through that process just to make their lives a little bit easier. So I don't know who can do that, but it may be something that will help.
One additional thing I'll just add is that we are looking, we as planning staff, and we'll do this, of course, in collaboration with Environmental Sustainability Department, are looking at scheduling some sort of a, maybe perhaps a series of workshops on rebuilding that would be, you know, held here at City Hall or possibly even off-site if that's more convenient for people. You know, if it would be helpful to have something in the west end of town, we can do that. I don't know how many people are still living in that area if they were, you know, displaced from their homes. We are looking at doing that and we'll get information on that out as soon as possible.
If I could make a suggestion, this is something that's bothered me for, well, we're now six weeks into this process. And what I think would be most helpful for planning and environmental sustainability to do is to say, here's what's going to happen. You need to do this, then you need to do this, then you need to do this, this, and this, and then this. And if you just give a list of the things that need to be done. For example, there's been no formal determination of whether or not temporary housing will be allowed before the property is cleaned. Just say, it has to be done, it has to be, you have to do this. Then, do we have to get a demolition permit from the city? Because some of the material on your website says, yes, you're going to need a demolition permit. The process of going through the CAL recycle or the option two, the opting out, doesn't say anything about demolition permits. Another example is the opting out. If you opt out of the CAL recycle, it says you've got to get asbestos clearance. Well, the guys that came around and did the hazmat clearance said, I have no asbestos in the property, so I still need to go get asbestos. It's a linear process and if you guys would just lay it out and say, you might even say, you know, these are all the requirements we can come up with right now and it's without prejudice to our coming up with more. But give people a roadmap that they can follow. It's the ambiguity now and the uncertainty that's creating a lot of angst.
Okay, thank you.
So again, sorry for your loss personally and to all in the community impacted. Obviously, all of us are over there with you and working our best to get through this quickly. So with that, let's move on to the, did you have anything as well or, sorry?
I'll go, congratulations to Councilmember Pearson. You'll be missed over here. And Bonnie, I think the January 10th item also includes the zone text amendment, right? To deal with adding some provisions that are in our code that dealt with the 93 fire, which would need to be readopted for this fire. So there'll be some considerations about that. You'll be coming before us also.
Yeah, and specifically, that is the, right now, the code allows for replacing exactly what you had in the same location. The amendment that we're making would take the replacement plus 10%, which right now in the code is specific to the 1993 fire and make that available for this fire as well.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. The LIP provides an exemption for a requirement of a CDP. If you build what you had and you can increase and you don't increase size, height, or
Bulk.
square footage by more than 10%. There again, would be, it would be helpful to have some clarification. If you've got an 18-foot-high house and you can't increase it by more than 10%, that takes you up to 19 and a half feet. You know, if the standard that you're going to apply is, no, as long as you don't increase the square footage by more than 10%, you're good to go, even if you do go up a little bit more, that would be helpful to know. Give us a way to start planning for what we can do. So a determination one way or another on that would be helpful.
Okay.
I think a lot of that will be sorted out also through the amendment process, because it's up to the council about if they want to adopt exactly what was done in 93 before or if they're going to make adjustments.
No, all I'm saying is, this is part of the current LIP. And it's the language, the way it's written. It says you cannot increase square footage or bulk or mass or height by more than 10%. What does that mean?
Oh, you mean the boundaries of the LIP? Even though you can't build out to that under the code, the zoning code? Okay.
The answer to that is actually, you can increase, you could increase across all three of those measures. And that's specifically related to a CDP exemption. The code change that we're looking to make in the municipal code is to allow that rebuild, like-for-like rebuild plus 10% to be processed with a planning verification rather than having to get an administrative plan review. So that's the streamlining part that we're trying to accomplish.
Question on that. If you go over 18 feet, you get into this view thing. And how do you handle that administratively when you've got neighbors saying you're blocking my view? So you may want to limit it to 18 feet because that's a hornet's nest.
You don't get out of a site plan review. So that would still, even if you have an administrative plan review, you would, there's still a site plan review associated with that and there's noticing involved. But it doesn't come to the planning commission, same as it is today. An administrative plan review with a site plan review is approved administratively by the planning director after the proper noticing and story polls and all that stuff happens.
So if it doesn't come to us, how does a neighbor appeal?
You appeal a planning director decision to the planning commission. So if a neighbor wanted to appeal a site plan review, that would come to you, the planning commission.
How would the neighbor know?
There's notice provided, mailed notice.
But this could be adjusted too, based on your recommendation and what the council decides to do. They can make different choices about how high you can rebuild and what process that'll take, so.
Yeah, okay. So again, thank you for the input and the conversation. Obviously, this will be going for a while. So next up, we have the consent calendar.
I move item 3B1 be accepted. 3B2 is continued.
Wait, no, 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 it's a 3A1. 3B1 has been continued. So to move the balance.
3B1, yes, and 3A1 we accept, correct?
Well, 3A1, I'd have a question. I didn't want to pull that one myself.
You want to pull it? Okay.
Yeah, it'd be a quick one.
Then we have no, oh, well, then you pull it and there's no motion, right?
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and pull 3A1. Let's see, so the item is coastal development permit number 17-062, site plan review number 18-038, minor modification number 18-014, and demolition permit number 18-018. An application for an interior and exterior remodel of in addition to an existing two-story, single-family residence bluff restoration and associated development. So quick staff report if possible.
I do have a short staff report for this one. Thank you, members of the commission. Commissioner Seibert, welcome back. Good to see you. Commissioner Jennings, our sympathies go out to you and your family. So this item was heard previously on November 5th. It was reviewed and considered by the planning commission. The planning commission directed staff to bring it back with a resolution and revised plans that remove the windows on the east side of the proposed second-story addition, convert the second-story deck to a flat roof with a parapet, relocate the HVAC equipment away from the east side of the property line, and revise the resolution to reflect changes along with the revised plan's middle date. Just to refresh everybody's memory, because it's been a little bit now. This project consisted of 1,949 square feet of additions and interior and exterior remodel of the existing single-family residence, a new 935-square-foot basement, 788-square-foot second unit, 440-square-foot detached garage, onsite wastewater treatment system, new swimming pool, spa, decks, repair and maintenance of existing decks, landscaping, retaining walls, and bluff restoration plan. It also had three, or two discretionary requests and a demolition permit included. On November 6th, 2018, the applicant submitted revised plans that show the removal of the proposed windows on the east side of the second-story addition. The plans also show the conversion of the second-story deck to a flat roof with a parapet. The November 6th plans also have the HVAC equipment moved from the east side of the property line to the west side of the property line. And with these changes, staff has revised the planning commission resolution to include conditions requiring the removal of the windows and conversion of the second-story deck in addition to the updated plan's middle date. Now, these changes to the revised plans were a result of correspondence between staff, the applicant, and the neighbors on the east side of the property. The neighbors were concerned with the lack of privacy to their backyard due to the new second-story addition and the proposed second-story deck. They were also concerned with the noise from the proposed HVAC equipment. The owner has agreed to the revised plans in order to alleviate the neighbors' concerns. Further correspondence with the neighbors has been received and distributed regarding the side yard fencing. A new side yard fence is not being proposed as part of this project. However, the owner has agreed to repair the fence if needed in order to allow the neighbors additional space between their existing residence and the fence. allow the neighbors additional space between their existing residence and the fence. And a letter and an email from both parties was distributed as part of the correspondence. So in summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution as revised, approving the project as condition. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Can we quickly go through disclosures? Any?
Last time it came before us.
Yeah, same. I've nothing new since the last.
Same.
I drove by today.
Thank you. And I wasn't on the, I wasn't in the meeting where we went through this. That's probably why I pulled it. So with that.
Mr. Marks, have you reviewed the materials and the discussion at the last meeting?
From the last meeting?
Where, I don't know where this, the meeting where this was discussed?
I did not review that. I reviewed the meeting, the notes for this meeting.
Okay.
So my question might be answered very quickly.
Okay.
You may not be able to vote.
Yeah, you do need to recuse yourself if you're not familiar with the record of the proceedings here.
Okay, thank you then. Okay. Then I will recuse myself because I didn't review that one from last session. And the question I had was on, I was trying to find the two-thirds rule on this specific property. And all I could find reference was on, and this is a question of staff on this one, is on page T1-1, there's a calculation for first floor and second floor, and the ratio on the main house looked like 97% if I read that right. I just wasn't, because I didn't see an explicit two-thirds rule on this write-up. So if it was in the prior write-up, that's what I, that's what I had missed. So I just wanted to check if that, if the two-thirds rule was followed or if this calc is kind of referencing something else.
It was followed. There was, in the original plans, there is a sheet in there that shows an exhibit with the two-thirds and they comply.
Question.
Go ahead.
Jessica, the fence agreement is not part of this agreement, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
I'll move staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll recuse myself. So.
Did you read the record?
Yes.
Well, no, I've only reviewed what I got. Okay, then no. So you two should have recused.
Two recused, also three votes. Let's do roll call on the three then.
Vice Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Namaza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you for that. Next up, we have item 5A, coastal development permit number 15-057, an application for the construction of a soldier pile wall to stabilize a bluff slope and protect an existing main residence and surrounding down-slope properties. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Chair, members of the planning commission. The project before you tonight is a coastal development permit to construct an underground soldier pile wall across two properties in order to stabilize the bluff slope and protect the subject site and surrounding properties. The project before you tonight was originally approved by the planning commission on October 3, 2018. However, the planning department was later informed that the project was not properly noticed in the local newspaper and the local coastal program requires a notice to be published in a newspaper of general circulation if the matter is heard by the planning commission. Although the original hearing was noticed in multiple ways, including a posting at City Hall and noticed by mail to owners and occupants within 500 feet of the site, a new public hearing is being held to ensure that anyone interested in being heard on this matter has the opportunity to do so. Here's a brief presentation of the project that was before you on October 3. Here's the vicinity map and aerial photograph of the subject site. The subject properties are located on the south side of Pacific Coast Highway with Malibu Road to the south and Puerto Canyon Road to the southwest. The properties were disturbed in the past to accommodate existing residential development. The area in the yellow indicates the approximate location of the proposed soldier pile wall between the two properties. The bluff slope has been subject to a long history of landslides. In 2011, a landslide occurred west of the site and damaged Puerto Canyon Road, septic systems, and various neighboring properties. Soon after, permanent slope repair improvements were constructed. However, according to the project geotechnical engineer, shallow slope failures exist and extend across the two properties. The engineer recommended the construction of the soldier pile wall, which consists of 13 piles that extend 40 feet below grade. The project also includes revegetation improvements to restore landscaping impacted by the pile wall, including temporary irrigation. No other new developments proposed under this application besides the underground soldier pile wall. Here's the site plan of the proposed project. To the east, you have 25,000 PCH and in yellow, you have the existing single-family residence. Immediately to the west of that, along the property line, you have the proposed soldier pile wall that is necessary to stabilize the bluff slope that is indicated in the orange. You have 25,040 PCH to the northwest and you have Pacific Coast Highway to the north. And you have Malibu Road to the south. In closing, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 18-81 approving coastal development permit 15-057. That concludes staff's presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Do we have any recusals on this project? No? Okay. Disclosures?
I did contact Carlos about, well, I made a question at the last meeting about grass. Carlos replied after the meeting to me that it wasn't grass, it was some other kind of plant. I looked up the requirements and found ordinance 343, which determines how you do landscape plans. I discussed this extensively with Carlos this afternoon and I also discussed it with Richard Mollica and observed the foliage in front of the house.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and since I was not part of that, I will abstain from this, vote on this one as well.
Thank you very much. I have no disclosures past what we had last time?
But I've seen this project several times, both on planning commission and the city council as it's moved forward over the years. This has gone on for a long time, but I still abstain because I didn't review what happened last.
Very well. Thank you. And I have no additional disclosures past last time. So any questions of staff?
The reason I asked at the last meeting what kind of landscaping review had been done is because this slide is in an area that wiped out five houses. It's had three slides. It is sliding again. The city spent a lot of money there. And so I want to determine why it was sliding now and partially what was causing it and what was part of the CDP originally to remediate that. And as I said, I looked up the ordinance 343, which is what is required of the planning department to approve a project. And it's quite long. Basically, it requires a landscaping plan upon the middle of the project. So does the LCP. Turns out that this landscaping plan was approved three years after the house was approved. It never came to the planning commission. This preference is necessary to ask the question. So then I looked up the plan and briefly it requires the planning director to review the water usage and approve it and to get an after-the-fact approval by the planning director and the city to monitor it. It also requires a maintenance agreement, a maintenance plan and agreement. And the water budget calculations have to be consistent with section 9.22.060 as long as, as long as section 3I1, which has approval of a landscape management plan. Now, the original CDP also required that we maintain public views from a public highway. So I reviewed the landscape plan and I found out that first, it had been approved with toion trees or bushes or trees or whatever you want to call them, all the way across the front, all the way down and partway down the side yard. I looked up toion trees. They grow from two to five meters, not 42 inches. And then, of course, I drove by and saw that you can no longer see the ocean and haven't for a long time. Then I looked up the water calculations. And the water calculations on the landscape plan were done by the builder, builder's representative. And unfortunately, they were based on the Santa Monica law, not the Malibu law.
I can explain a little more about that whenever you're ready.
Okay, I just want to give you a couple of things. They came out with 88,000 square feet, which is about two acres of landscape. But they calculated 5.3 acre feet of water, which is, turns out to be 31 inches of water per year per square foot. Okay? And then you add the normal rainfall, which is 1.2 million gallons of water, which is a lot of water. So I wondered, then I wondered, where was the review that allowed 1.2 million? I looked at the calculations and they use the minimum, some kind of term that means the minimum, .71 on all calculations, which I don't know is correct or not, because there's no comments in the staff report about this. So my real question is, one, I think it's appropriate for us to, when we're dealing with a wall stopping a slide, to consider what caused the slide and do something about it. And that's a question to Trevor first. There's, in my mind, there's a direct nexus between 1 point million gallons of water and a slide. Is that, is that true?
The issue here is, is that the project is not the slide. The project is the soldier piles.
To stop the slide.
The project is to put and install on these soldier piles. And so if the soldier piles, what they're, the construction they're going to do on the project, if that's causing an impact that you need to mitigate, then it'd be appropriate to have conditions to mitigate the impacts of the soldier piles, anything being built as part of this project. We can't reopen impacts from a previous project as part of this.
Even if the city staff has not followed the law in approving it. This was not approved by the coastal, by the planning commission. It's approved by city staff without the planning.
If city staff is, is not doing their job, then your recourse is to address it with city manager, who manages the city staff, to make sure that they do do the job correctly. And that would be the recourse if there's an issue with how staff's performing.
So, we build, we build a house and we dump too much water on it and that causes us to have to put in soldier piles. So we consider whether to put in the soldier piles. Now, if you're saying the staff, if this original CDP was okay, then why should we approve soldier piles? Because it was okay and you didn't need them.
If we can just get the answers from.
That's what I meant. It's a question.
Yeah, because I was thinking this through. If we can just get this on the table, then with the staff, directly from staff, then public comment can better address it as well.
Can you explain more, John?
Okay, you always need a nexus to do something.
Yep.
Okay, there's no nexus to put in the soldier piles if there's no problem. And the problem was, you know, you don't just put soldier piles inside of a hill for nothing. Okay, so what caused the slide? That's the nexus for the soldier piles. And so I don't understand why we cannot adjust the cause or correct the cause of the slide. Slide is water-driven, okay? It's not, if there was never any rain and never any, and never any irrigation, there would be no slide.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm trying to ask process question.
I'm not certain that the soldier piles that are part of this application are related to the bigger slide that Commissioner Maza is talking about. The soldier piles in this particular application, I think, are intended to address a different problem. And I'm not sure the timing of the slide relative to the irrigation. I think the applicant could speak more to that, but if the slide occurred before this house was even finished and the irrigation installed, then I don't know if we can find that there's a nexus.
That's a different slide you're talking about.
John, is that enough to open the public comment?
It's an, I would like an answer at some point on the legality of all of this. Is the, my last question will be, is the original CDP valid since it was not issued properly? That'll be my second question.
Well, I'd like to address a little bit of that. There was a landscape plan approved as part of the package that was before the, as far as I'm, I hope Carlos will correct me if I'm wrong. I believe there was a landscape plan that was approved as part of the original CDP that came to the planning commission. The landscape plan was further refined after the planning commission's approval, which is not unusual that adjustments get made in compliance with the conditions of approval after the planning commission's approval. They don't come back to the planning commission. There is a place on this, well, let me answer the thing about the Santa Monica factor. I think it's the, I think it's the evapotranspiration factor. I've forgotten my terminology on some of these things, but the state water-efficient landscape ordinance requires that you include this factor in your calculations. And for Los Angeles County, there are about seven cities that are listed that you can use as the factor for your location. You choose the one that's closest to you. And this is the, Santa Monica is the closest one out of the six or seven that are available. So that's why that's used in here. It's not specific to Malibu. It's kind of a regional factor that you apply. The, there is a place where the property owner was supposed to sign and that did not get signed. And we can follow up with the current property owner and get that signed. And that is a statement of compliance. Let's see, no, that got signed. It's, it's part of the maintenance agreement. And so since coastal development permits run with the property, we can follow up with the current property owner, which is not the same property owner that had the original CDP approved, and make sure that that gets signed and that the new owner is aware of his responsibility for maintenance, consistent with the approved landscape plan and conditions of approval.
Okay, a question. When I asked Carlos for the landscape plan, he told me there was none except for the one he sent me. And that's why I'm basing it on the one that was done three years after the house was approved.
There was one initially submitted that we found from 2010 and then the one you received was a 2011, the latest approval.
This afternoon, you told me it was 2013.
No, the approval by the city biologist, the one that was provided to you was from 2011.
So am I correct? There is no maintenance agreement?
The maintenance agreement is included in information on the face of the plan and there is a place for the property owner to sign that agreeing to the terms and conditions and we can follow up with the current property owner.
Okay. Can you follow up on view blockage?
That's a code enforcement matter and the conditions of approval allow for a hedge up to 42 inches in a solid configuration. And then the remaining part up to six feet has to be view permeable. And so that can be a challenge with a species that has a mature potential growth height that's way above those things. And, but yes, that becomes a code enforcement matter and we'll follow up with the property owner to make sure that it gets maintained in accordance with the conditions.
Okay, now, the last question, then I'll be done, is on future projects, are we going to go through the process required by ordinance 343?
Yes, and we do go through the process required by ordinance 343, but we'll make it more clear in the conditions of approval.
Thank you.
Great. So with that, we're going to open the public comment. First up, we have the applicant, Cheryl Beebe. We have no other speakers. So Cheryl, obviously you know the process, 15 minutes. If you want to save some time, just let us know ahead so we can block the clock.
Sure. This is Henri.
Yes.
Good evening, chairmarks, commissioners. I'm Cheryl. I'm the applicant for the project, as was just explained to you. And let me begin by saying, Commissioner Jennings, I'm so sorry when I heard about your house. I'm glad that you and your family are all right. And I also would like to... And I also would like to say my heart goes out to the community at large as well. I have several clients who've lost their homes as well, too, so it's going to be a process, working with our lovely staff to get us back on the road to rebuilding. Yes, I agree with everything that Bonnie and Carlos have said, and there was a landscape plan that was approved initially under the original CDP. Then there was a change, as Bonnie explained, made to that shortly thereafter. And so, John, you might just be confusing the date on that. Again, what Trevor has been trying to tell you is that there's no rational nexus. This project is simply what it is. It is soldier piles, underground with a grade beam, underground, and it is a preventative measure. And the slide is from a long time ago. It's there. But from what happened to the west under the Trento property, this is why we're engaging in this preventative measure. And I, other than that, I think, you know, other than Chair Cybert, welcome back, we've been through this all before. And so I don't see the point in rehashing what's already on the record and been discussed. So with that, I'll just save the rest of my time to answer questions or speak to any public comment. Thank you very much, and again, congratulations, and I'm sorry, Jeff.
Thank you for that. Are there any other speakers that want to come up on this one? Okay, with that, I'm going to close out the public hearing, and it's back up here for discussion, so.
I just have a question. Who is the expert that can tell us that dropping that much water on the property isn't having an impact on the slide? Because that's where, that was, I think that was the basis of John's question, where it started.
Well, or, or is the question, is there, is there anyone who can show that there's the cor, that that's the correlation leading to this issue?
No, I, I want to, the first step says, we're dumping a bunch of water on the property. Is that having an impact on the slide? Let's, if we, let's figure that one out first, then we can figure if there's a nexus to the whole process. Go ahead. I'm asking somebody who's got a real, is an expert and can give me that answer, because that's the key, I think.
Yes, not being an expert particularly in drainage myself, I can tell you that I have spoken with the wastewater and stormwater consultant for the original home project, as well as the Trento slide, the greater global slope repair. And he, due to a couple of issues with drainage, they went through a process that, I didn't actually work on that drainage part, but he informed me that that was resolved and approved by Craig George and also Public Works. And they would be the ones that would determine that, if it was solved satisfactorily.
Yeah, and I'm going to, before John asks a question, I have a favor. Carlos, can you bring up a slide to represent the property, just so we can kind of talk through kind of what the history is, so we can clarify, just get through this one? Would that help also for you?
Yeah, I'm just going to put it back, yeah.
And then, John, you had another question?
Well, my question is, what would wastewater or stormwater have to do with irrigation?
I think it's all combined, when you're addressing water. Is that stormwater, groundwater, irrigation water, and, which one, I forgot one, but they all kind of go hand in hand as to how drainage functions. I believe Norm could, being a civil engineer, speak to that same fact.
I'll ask Norm later.
I'm going to move the staff recommendation, and here's why I'm going to do it. This is an application to install soldier piles. As the council has told you, if there are things, conditions that are created by the installation of the soldier piles that need to be mitigated, then we can condition the installation on that basis. We went through this entire argument once before, heard the same arguments, and I, I didn't understand them then, I don't understand them now, I don't understand, I, I don't understand how you could consider denying the installation of soldier piles because of some earlier confusion or wrongdoing or whatever with regard to the amount of water that goes on there. I guess the idea is, is that somehow you, you could approve the installation of the soldier piles and, and retroactively condition the project to correct things that you feel went on before, but that's, going back to what, what Trevor has told you, you can only condition it based upon impacts created by the soldier piles themselves. So having spent a long time on this project at the last meeting, and I, I really hope we don't have to re-chew it again, and so my motion is to approve the staff recommendation.
And I'd just like to comment that the question would be, if I were asking it, if you put the irrigation back to a reasonable level, as required by three B three, would you need the soldier piles?
That, that's not a question that's before us. That's not a finding that we have to make as to whether the soldier piles are needed or not.
John, the answer to that question is yes. If you want this preventative measure taken, water or no water, that slide, which I don't remember how many years old it is, it's old, though. It's older than all of us, and we're old, let's face it, boys. So, you know, the thing is, we don't have, you could deny it, but I would hate to be the one who denied it and then have that thing go tomorrow.
Vice Chair Euring, you had a.
I'm getting close to that, but just, look, and if I'm wrong, somebody tell me I'm wrong, all right? I don't have a problem with the soldier piles, okay? My concern is that if, if we know that we're dumping an excessive amount of water on this piece of property, and that excessive amount of water in the future has potential of creating more damage, how do we fix that? How, how do you, I mean, do, do we just sit back and say, okey-dokey, it's going to let it go?
Wouldn't that be a code enforcement issue?
I don't know. It's my, all I want to do is say, look, if it's a potential problem, as opposed to ignoring it, we should at least get someone to take a look at it, who knows what they're doing, and say, it is or it isn't a potential problem, and if it is, fix it, if not, but to ignore it, I think is wrong.
There's two possibilities. One possibility is that the property owners have not properly obeyed the strictures of their coastal development permit. If that's the case, then it's, then it's a code enforcement issue. The other possibility is that somehow the code, the, the CDP was improperly granted, improperly granted with proper conditions. I don't know how you fix that, frankly.
I don't know.
But, but, but those are the two possibilities. Neither one of them includes denying this project or conditioning this project to, to try to address those issues.
Commissioners, I will, when we address this with the property owner about signing on the, the operation and maintenance agreement, we will review the water calculations. I mean, at this point, this is on paper, and so we'll review with them what they're actually doing and make sure that it's in compliance with all of the conditions of approval.
And just having somebody say, look, it either is going to be a long-range problem or it isn't, and if it isn't, I can go home. So I'll second.
All right, so we have a, go ahead, John. Okay, go ahead.
Norm?
Yes.
Just so we know, is, is the septic engineer or the stormwater engineer the guy to evaluate whether a slide is being activated by water from non-septic, non-stormwater? Or is it a geotechnical engineer?
It was a geotechnical engineer and a soils engineer. They're two different things, and they actually have two separate stamps. The reason a slide occurs clearly is that the, you know, the forces preventing the slide are overcome by gravity. It's very simple. And the forces that prevent the movement is friction within the earth, and friction within the earth is reduced when you put water in between the voids of the particles. It really is that simple. So water does have an impact on a slide, I think we all know that. Many times, a slide will occur four or five months after a heavy rain, and that's because it takes that long for the water to percolate down to the slide plane. When it finally hits the slide plane, you know, it's June, and you get a slide, and it hasn't rained in three months. So yes, water has a serious impact on increasing the potential for a slide. The piles that were, that people are talking about right now, and by the way, let's look at the source of water. You could have, you know, an epic rainstorm that would provide enough water, certainly as much as the irrigation that we're talking about and the percolation of the septic system. Those things have to be taken into account when you talk about ultimately a slide that could cover an access road and prevent an ambulance from getting to a house or a fire engine from getting to a house. So I, I look at these piles as a preventative measure to ensure the stability of the hillside. It's not visible, no one's going to see them, no one's going to know they're there. And in the meantime, if there's a violation with respect to a landscaping issue, I agree with Commissioner Jennings, that is a separate issue and it needs to be brought up. But right now, it sounds to me like the caissons are necessary, the soldier piles, which are concrete piles, connected with a grade beam, so that one of them can't fail without all of them failing at the same time. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
All right, let's have a roll call vote then, if you don't mind.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
I'm voting yes, because I've been assured that this will come into compliance.
Commissioner Cybert?
I abstain, because I was not part of the early one.
Chair Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have item five B, coastal development permit number one seven dash zero four four, lot merger number one seven dash zero zero three, and demolition permit numbers one seven dash zero zero nine and one seven dash zero one zero. An application for a lot merger demolition of two existing single-family beachfront residences and associated development and construction of a new single-family beachfront residence and associated development. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, members of the commission. Next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for two two zero 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 and two two zero zero eight PCH. It includes a lot merger of two adjacent lots and demolition permits to demolish the existing single-family residences and associated development. The lots are located on the south side of PCH in the single-family medium zoning district, and both lots are approximately a quarter of an acre in size. The project before you tonight consists of a lot merger of two legal lots, demolition of the existing single-family beachfront residences and associated development, and construction of a new nine thousand five hundred and sixty-three square foot, two-story single-family beachfront residence, decks, exterior stairs to the beach, a shoreline protection device, onsite wastewater treatment system, and a twenty-foot, twenty-two-foot wide view corridor on the west side of the property. Currently, both lots are non-conforming with regards to view corridors and the front yard gates and fences. Lot A is also non-conforming with regards to the required enclosed parking spaces, as the garage has been blocked with the installation of a new, of a non-conforming front yard fence. The proposed development meets all setback requirements and provides a twenty-two-foot wide view corridor on the western side of the proper, property, where currently no view corridor is present on either lot. The proposed OWTS and bulkhead are located under the view corridor and have been determined to be the most landward feasible by the city environmental health administrator and the city coastal engineer. The project proposes an attached two-car garage on the west side of the structure and two unenclosed parking spaces on the east side with an atrium in the center. The proposed two-story beachfront residence is twenty-four feet in height, as measured from the center line of PCH, which was surveyed at nineteen point three feet, and the recommended finished floor elevation, as indicated from the wave uprush, uprush report, which is twenty-one feet. This recommended finished floor elevation is consistent with that of a neighboring property located at two one nine five zero. In two thousand and fifteen, a CDP for the new single-family residence at two one nine five zero was approved with a recommended finished floor elevation of twenty point three feet, so a difference of approximately seven tenths of a foot. Story poles were erected in August, and the photograph on the top left shows the view of the proposed development from the northbound side of PCH. The photograph on the lower right shows the views of the proposed development on, from the south side, or southbound lane of PCH. The photographs also show the relative heights of both adjacent neighbors and the proposed view corridor. Properties on either side of the subject properties are constructed with two-story single-family residence of relatively equal height. I was informed just before the hearing started that there is one correction on the resolution. It's in section one F. I have the date of December, and it should be the date of November, so I'll have that revised in a new resolution tomorrow. And in summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution number eighteen fifty-three as revised, approving the project as conditioned. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant and staff are available for questions.
Thank you very much. Will we have disclosures up here?
Yes, I'm with Commissioner Mazza. We've met with Fred Gaines and the applicant's representative, walked through the projects, didn't learn anything that wasn't just identified in the staff report.
Commissioner Mazza?
The same, Steve.
I drove by it, stopped, and looked, did not tour with Fred, but I have viewed the project, didn't learn anything more than what was in here.
I don't have any disclosures at this time, and do we have any questions of staff?
I'll wait till.
Let's go ahead and open up the public hearing then. So we have three speaker slips for the applicant team, Justin Hembrecht, Fred Gaines, and Reg Brown. So you have your fifteen minutes to use as you, as you like. We don't have any other slips right now.
Commissioner Cybert, back to the future. See you again, and thank you. My name is Fred Gaines with the Law Office of Gaines and Stacey. We represent the applicant in this matter. With me tonight are Michael Pachowski, who is the project manager for the project, Justin Hembrecht is the architect, and Reg Brown, the coastal engineer. We concur with the staff report and agree with the conditions of approval. In addition, we, in further discussion with my client, we have decided to offer, to voluntarily offer the lateral beach easement that had been, the staff report says that we had turned that down. At this point, we are going to offer to include the lateral easement as a condition of approval for, for the case. I think you know where, where the project site is. This shows the current condition with the two existing homes. There's the, the site survey of the two existing homes. You saw this in the staff report, it shows the new home, the twenty-two-foot view corridor on the, on the offshore side of the building. We have the floor plans available if there are questions about them. There's a courtyard with some landscaping in the center of the project. The renderings. This is a clean sheets project, complies with all of the standards for this particular site, and the staff has gone through that, but I wanted to point that out. I do also want you to know that we did outreach. This is a copy of the flyer that was used to call for a meeting. We've knocked on some doors. We actually, this went out twice, because it went before the fire, the meeting ended up being canceled, did another meeting later. The meeting ended up being canceled, did another meeting later. We actually, no one showed up for the meeting despite having distributed the flyer up and down the houses, up and down PCH and across PCH. We did have one inquiry from the neighbor across PCH at one point who had asked about roof projections and some view-related issues. Knocked on the next door neighbor's doors. We're unaware of any opposition. I always say that hesitantly, like someone's going to rush through the door, but we did make efforts and wanted you to know that this had been distributed with the project manager's contact information. With that, the architect is here and can go through the design and talk about any of the features. I'll leave that to you as to whether you'd like to hear that. It can take a few minutes to do that. I'm not sure that you want to, but they're here and they are available. And then, of course, any other questions? And we had Reg Brown, the coastal engineer, here in case there are any questions about the issues related to that in this particular case. With that, we'll save the rest of the time for any questions or comments that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you as well. So, do we have any other public speakers? Should I go ahead and close and we'll? Yeah, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment and then we might have some questions as we go. Okay, so let's bring it back up here. Go ahead.
Just two quick ones, maybe one quick one for you and then one for staff. When we did the, we met with you guys, you mentioned that the view permeable section, you were going to change what was in there to make it view permeable.
Yes.
Has that been done? Is that in the?
Yes. Do we have an updated slide showing?
As long as it's been done, Fred, if you tell me it's been done.
Yes, we did. The condition is clear that it's to be 90% permeable materials. We did actually, we updated the rendering. It was purely a visual aspect, the drawings and the.
It's cool.
If you want to come forward, just so we can.
You can see here on the, on the, on the right side of the building, it had previously been a dark, it had shown a dark gate and a wall and now we've changed it to make it clear in the rendering.
Like you said, as long as you said.
It's permeable, so you can see that here. This is the updated rendering.
Cool.
Anything to add or you're good?
No, if you look at the site plan drawing that the, that the planning department has shown, it specifically calls out the 90% view permeable gate.
I just remember Fred mentioning that too as we were there, so I figured I'd show you. My memory's still working.
Correct.
Go ahead, John.
One more, you know, in the setback, and I asked Fred this and we were, we met, the way you computed the setback for this building, and I don't think it makes a whole bunch of difference. I'm just trying to understand what the rule is. You took the buildings on either, one building on either side, took the average and said, "That's where the building should go." Is that how we're going to do it? I mean, is that how we typically do it or?
That's how we typically do it.
That's the front setback, your.
Front setback, yes.
Yeah, LIP, Section 3.6.
You just take one on either side and do it?
It calls for, actually, I have it written here. "Front yard setbacks for beachfront development shall be 20 feet maximum or the average of the two adjacent neighbors, whichever is less."
I'm done.
Go ahead.
I have a question, Reg Brown. Just to preface my question, we've had six houses in a row that have come off Coast Highway and they're supposed to drop down if the wave uprush is lower. We've had six houses in a row which are exactly flat, so, which seems statistically impossible to me. So, my question is, what is your wave up, what is your sea rise calculation for the coastal commission?
The sea rise used on this particular project is 18 inches.
Okay, and we've had 18 inches to 7 feet come before us.
That's not a sea level rise. That is new FEMA-based flood elevations. And if I can explain, the difference is the previous FEMA maps were based, they arrived at a base flood elevation of top of wave and that, the top of wave elevation was then used as a base flood elevation for the FEMA map. In 2016, FEMA revised the calculations and they basically revised the way they calculated the base flood elevation as well. And they use the wave uprush limit, which on a lot of our beaches, you have a wave that breaks at a certain elevation, rushes up the hill like the embankment of Pacific Coast Highway or Malibu Road, and rushes up to a higher elevation than the breaking wave elevation or the crest elevation. So, in that situation, it's not even sea level rise. It's just a determination of the wave uprush limit caused the rise in the base flood elevation. Another case in point would be on Broad Beach Road. Under the current maps, the 2016 maps, on Broad Beach Road, you have a base flood elevation of 17 at one house and it would be west of that house. But, east of that house, there's a line and east of that house, base flood elevation's 31.
I understand that.
And that's not a sea level rise, though.
No, but I assume that you're sitting there calculating with historic numbers. And the coastal commission came by a while ago and said, "Well, you've got to count the sea level rise." So, I assume you calculate it the way it is now and then you add whatever the sea level rise is to it. And I've asked other people, you know, "What are you using for the sea level rising?" It's not always 17 inches. So, is there any basis to that number, 17 inches?
The basis of the number is, the coastal commission has come up with three scenarios and each scenario has a relative probability associated with that scenario. Where the 17-inch sea level rise is the low scenario of the coastal commission and that has a 95% probability, I believe. The higher you go, the less probability you have. Is it a possibility? Yeah, now, I want to make a distinction between possibility and probability. It's a statistical determination. When we design these houses and we engineer these houses, we don't take the most extreme level. It would be like having to design for a 12.0 earthquake.
Or tsunami or something. Yeah, no, I understand that. My real question is, when another house comes up here and the coastal engineer says, "Well, I used a 4-foot sea level rise." There's no basis, in fact, for 4-foot sea level rise.
Not with the current data that's available today.
So, if the city was to standardize, the coastal commission's standard is 17 inches or 18 inches or somewhere right in that range. When I hear numbers of feet higher than that, then it's.
It's conservative.
Yeah. Okay, great. Well, and there's a difference between conservative, in my mind, I don't know if you need to know this, and trying to level the floors out, okay? That's not what the code says. Okay, thank you very much. I understand that. Okay, so Jessica, can I ask you a question? Or I guess Bonnie. Can we come up with a standard if that's the coastal commission's standard for sea level rise?
Actually, one of the things that I had intended to bring to you over the last, I forget now which meeting it was, but it was one of the two that was canceled as a result of the fire. We were scheduling a presentation by the City Coastal Engineer and Public Works to kind of talk through these issues and what the city is using as a standard so that you have the opportunity to ask questions and things like that.
Is that close to what Reg is saying?
I'll let them explain it to you. They do have some uniformity that they go by with what they ask for in wave uprush reports. So, we'll get that scheduled. Probably, and my goal was to have that, once the new commission appointments were made, so that everybody has the benefit of that presentation. So, it'll be shortly after that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to echo what was said. I was part of that process with the coastal commission as, on the Coastal Cities Issues Group for the League of California Cities. And we started with the League, with the National Academy of Sciences study on sea level rise and then through a series of debates with the coastal commission and the six of us that represented the coastal cities went through this process. And that's exactly what we ended up with. 18 inches was the high, was the high probability and it was 18 inches to 5 feet was the range. And trying to put, it's a lot of hand waving to try and do that because no one really understands exactly what it is. But, that's the number that coastal has settled on for the likely sea level rise through 20, was it 2040 something like, or 2030? No, 2040 or 2050? 2040, yeah, was 18 inches. And that's where that number came from, so.
Well, I thank you both because it's taken me five houses to get an answer.
Commissioner Jennings?
Move the staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, let's do a quick roll call vote then.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Euring?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Cybert?
Yes.
Chair Marks?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you again. I have one favor. I just, I understand that Commissioner Jennings is going to have to leave for item 5C. So, if no one's opposed, I'd like to move item 8A up so we can let Jeff get home. You have any?
I'll go along with that.
Okay, all right. So, we're going to go ahead and hear item 8A. So, we're going to move, 5C is going to come up just after this, just to be quick, though. So, it is the election of chair and vice chair. And let's see, so how do we want to manage this? Can you give your thoughts on what you're proposing?
So, ordinarily, this election of chair and vice chair would occur every nine and a half months. That's falling at a kind of an awkward time right here because we've just had a new council election and we'll have new appointments to the commission very shortly. So, the staff's recommendation is to postpone this until after you have your new commission in place and then do your elections at that time. Right.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion to nominate Steve Euring for chair. I can't conceive of us electing a brand-new person to chair, so I'd like to do it now and get us ready for the next meeting.
Do we, what do we want to do about the vice chair? Do we want to?
Well, you do them in sequence. You do them in sequence, right?
Right, so we'd have to do both now?
Oh, yeah. No, you do the chair first and then the vice chair, right?
Well, that's my question. Do we do that second vote tonight or do we do that at a later date?
No.
No, it'll happen immediately. So, if he's, if you move to make him the chair, he would take over for the last.
I have a restatement question. So, I don't have any problem with voting for the chair right now. Makes sense. For the vote for the vice chair, do we want to do that tonight as well?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
So, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, let's just do a roll call.
So, could we have a roll call vote for Steve to be the chair? No, no, go ahead, Bonnie, go ahead.
I wasn't sure if you were deciding whether or not to do that tonight or to take, so that's the nomination and you're moving forward tonight.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to do it tonight.
So, we, so that implies the decision is to go forward with the vote tonight and then do the seat swaps and go from there?
I have a question related to that. It, you know, it may be appropriate that one of the new commissioners would be vice chair and is it possible to split these two and vote for Steve for chair tonight and postpone the vote for the vice chair until we have the permanent commissioner?
That was my question.
Yeah, and my motion is to do them both tonight.
Yeah, well, we do one at a time and when the new commission's seated, then there traditionally be a new election for chair and vice chair. So, it's, of course, up to the commission's discretion about what it wants to do on that, but per the policy attached here, when a new commission's seated, then.
What policy is that?
It's the one that's attached onto here.
Okay. Okay.
So, wait, before we vote on this, and so to get, to make sure we're clear. So, if we vote tonight and then the new, the new commission is seated, then we would immediately have a vote with that new seating and then there could be a rotation on the chair at that point.
So, what would happen is if you put a new, if Commissioner Euring's appointed tonight, he'd be chair for the next meeting and then, or was the vice chair would be the vice chair for the next meeting? And then, I don't know which meeting, the new commissioners are seated, but he would continue to be chair. There'd be an item put forward on the agenda when the new commission's seated and then the new commission can decide whether, what it wants to do on that item.
Okay.
All right, so if we could have a roll call vote and the vote then is for Steve Euring to be the new chair of the planning commission effectively immediately. So.
Commissioner?
I'm sorry, I just wanted to ask one question. Commissioner Euring, are you absent from the January 10th meeting?
I think so, but I'm not, I don't know yet.
Okay, okay, just wanted to clarify.
I couldn't, I looked at the thing today and it said the meeting was on the 7th. So, I told my wife, "The 10th is okay, but I get it. I'm doing whatever she tells me."
Okay, got it.
Thank you. So, yeah, we'll continue the vote.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Chair Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Cybert?
Yes.
Vice Chair Euring?
Vote? Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so do we swap seats now? All right.
We got to vote for the vice chair.
He's the chair now, so he will call the vote for the vice chair.
I think you stay seated and just pass the gavel so that your names are. For the moment. We'll switch them up next meeting.
I'd like to vote for the vice chair. Any nominations?
Nominate, Commissioner Mazza?
I'll second.
Kathleen, could you give us a roll call vote?
Certainly. Chair Marks, or Commissioner Marks, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
No, since I was rotated to the next spot.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Cybert?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Within the prohibited distance of this project.
Do we need to read in the item before he reads or?
Yeah, you can be, just don't open beyond just.
Yeah, just, right. Item 5C, which is a coastal development permit number 17074, an application to construct a new one-story, single-family residence and associated development at 6116 Merritt Drive. Okay, can we have a staff report?
Let the record reflect, Commissioner Jennings has now left the room.
Yes, thank you, Chair Euring and members of, or members of the commission. Next item on the agenda is a coastal development permit for 6160 Merritt Drive. The subject property is not located within the appeal jurisdiction. This project was first approved as an administrative coastal development on December 31, 2013. That ACDP expired on December 31, 2016. On February 26, 2018, the applicant submitted a new ACDP application with revised landscaping to meet the updated landscape water conservation ordinance. No change to the architectural civil plans is proposed and no discretionary request is required as part of this application. On October 3, 2018, the ACDP was reported to the planning commission. At that time, the planning commission voted to have the item brought back for a full hearing. The property is located on the south side of Merritt Drive in the rural residential five-acre zoning district and is approximately 4.6 acres in size. The project before you tonight consists of a new 8,605-square-foot, one-story, single-family residence, including two attached two-car garages, a 900-square-foot second unit, a 612-square-foot pool house, and 536 square feet of covered areas that project more than 6 feet. The project also includes the installation of a new onsite wastewater treatment system, swimming pool, spa, water features, 970 cubic yards of non-exempt grading, and a 20-foot-wide driveway landscaping and hardscaping. The subject property consists of relatively flat surface near Merritt Drive with descending slopes at the rear of the property. with descending slopes at the rear of the property. Slopes descend to the east and southeast with an average steepness of two to one. The proposed development is cited closer to Merritt Drive in order to avoid development on steep slopes. All proposed development meets the required setbacks. The single-family residence has been designed as a one-story structure not to exceed eighteen feet in height, and includes two, two-car garages. Story poles were erected in August. These photographs were taken in September to show the story poles as visible from Merritt Drive. A poolhouse and a second unit are also proposed as part of the subject application. The poolhouse is designed to not exceed thirteen feet, two inches in height, and is shown in the upper elevation. The second unit is designed to not exceed twelve feet, seven inches in height, and is shown in the bottom elevation. As discussed within the staff report, there are a couple of unpermitted structures, a vineyard and an orchard, and a non-conforming front yard gate and hedge on the property. At Commissioner Mazza's request, I have revised condition number two of the resolution to include the removal of the non-conforming front yard gate and hedge. To date, staff has not received any correspondence regarding the subject application, so in summary, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution eighteen seventy-seven as revised, approving the project as conditioned, and this concludes my presentation. An applicant and staff are available for questions.
Disclosures. John?
None, none here.
Sorry, I, I did, I did ask Jessica about the difference between the staff report and the resolution that left off the gate, and she did correct that. I drove by it, there's nothing to see.
I drove by it and agree with John.
I have no disclosures, go ahead.
I contacted via email Mr. Brookman, the architect, uh, and there's a letter that came out as part of the, handed out later today. And I was just, mentioned the fact, when I looked, there were no story poles, so there was nothing there to see. And then I just had a question about the property that was next door, because as a result of the fire, I think all the properties up to that house, and I'm not sure what happened to the one exactly next door, were all burnt down. So, I didn't know if anybody was in that house, whether they'd been noticed, whether they knew what was going on. But without any, uh, communications, I guess we have to assume that they have, and the fact that this property's been there before, uh, I think we're all set. That was... And, and that letter is, is part of your packet here this evening. So, we've got one speaker slip, Mr. Brookman. Uh, come on up. He's the architect. Okay, you've got fifteen minutes.
Yep. Well, I don't have fifteen minutes' worth of material. Uh, thank you for your time. The, uh, presentation was pretty succinct. Uh, the, the project was approved before. The only reason we're back is, uh, my civil engineer did not get his corrections in on time, and, uh, much to my annoyance, and to my client's annoyance. We'd merely like the, uh, the, uh, commission to, uh, re-approve what's already been approved. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Can I have a public comment? Anybody else like to speak? We'll close public comment. Thank you very much. Back to Dais, any questions? John?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Uh, oh, John, go ahead.
Mine's just a quick one. You know, given the discussion earlier, I don't think you were here earlier for the discussion. We were talking about, uh, the issue of putting in at least, uh, some connection to the pools for a fire hydrant in front, uh, that a lot of people have done in the past, and that we used to require.
There, there is a draft hydrant, um, provided with, for the, with the pool.
Okay, I missed that in here, sorry. But I, that's good, thanks.
I have a question, Jessica. Um, this involves a second residential unit of nine hundred square feet, and I don't know where we stand on these, what do they call them, auxiliary granny houses?
Accessory dwelling units.
Yes. And the Co, and the Coastal Act says you can have one residential unit with a kitchen and all that stuff. One extra.
That's right. You can have, uh, the primary residence and then an accessory.
Okay, so this would be the ex, the, the accessory dwelling unit?
Um, if it has a kitchen, yes.
Okay, there wouldn't be a third?
Correct.
Okay. Um, now, I assume by the resolution that, that the vineyards and the orchards are going, uh, but they're shown on... What? Uh, they're shown on one of the plans, as existing orchard exists, existing vineyard, but they are being eliminated, correct?
They are being removed.
Okay. Now, um, one of my other concerns is, and, and this actually is a question of staff, again, there's palm trees everywhere in this house, okay? Even in the, even the house, with holes in the house with palm trees coming out, as I can figure out. And I just went through the situation where I, you know, ten o'clock at night, I was trying to put out a palm tree that was taller than I could squirt a hose, and it almost burned down two houses. As far as I'm concerned, it's a public safety hazard. Is, can we preclude individual items on a landscape plan because of public safety?
The ideal situation would be if the applicant was volun, would volun, uh, would, was willing voluntarily to make the changes to the, the plan. The current rules that we have don't prohibit, um, non-native species, so in terms of a code requirement, I think if you make findings specifically related to that, Trevor might say that you have the leeway to do that, but it's not a specific code requirement at this time.
Sure, I mean, we can see if, if he's willing to accept the condition.
Mr. Brookman, what do you think?
Um, I, I would have no objections to removing, uh, some palm trees. I find him a bit of a nuisance myself.
Okay, so does that mean, Trevor, we can put this in the resolution?
If he, if he's willing to accept as a voluntary condition to, is that, to remove all palm trees from the, the project?
You okay with that?
I, I'm, I'm fine with that, yes.
Okay, um, now, then my next question, I think, is the big question. This is the Ma, uh, Max Mansion, Max House. Uh, I looked in the staff report, and there's sixteen properties within five hundred feet, and we got a list of nine of them. So, I averaged the nine, which is, I don't know why there's not more, but, uh, I averaged the nine with a ten percent high, ten percent low. I got fifty-seven seventeen, and I averaged them without taking those off, and I get fifty-five thirty-one. So, the property's eighty-six to ninety-two percent bigger than the neighborhood. So, we have that situation, and then my question also is, I, I didn't count all the burn downs, but if the house no longer exists, is it in the, is it in the average, or what?
Well, to address your first question regarding fifteen properties or, and opposed to nine, I removed any property that was vacant, and there's a lot of parcels up there that don't have any development on it. They might have some gratings or some other thing that's kind of visible from, in the five-hundred-foot radius map, but there's no structure on there, so those were removed, and that's why you only have nine. I didn't do a reassessment based off of the fire rebuilds, because what was there before was previously approved, so we were doing assessments based off of that.
Okay, um... Well, I, 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 uh... That's, that's kind of strange, because, so we're gonna only have like three or four houses to average to? What is reality, because we don't know what's really gonna be?
Just as a clarification for the commission, this project does not have any discretionary requests with it. It's simply a coastal development permit that is...
So, there's no neighborhood character analysis required?
Yeah, there's no neighborhood character analysis required. It's, it doesn't, it doesn't, um, trigger the need for a site plan review. We have provided the square footage table as a courtesy, because the, the commission has asked for it in the past, but it is not, um, required to be considered, uh, in making your findings.
Well, we have asked to have in all staff reports the requirement, which is a requirement of the L, LCP, that it be consistent with the LCP and the MMC. But that, that is not here again. So, that's what, I would put that back in as the basis for my questioning, because the Malibu Municipal Code has adopted the general plan, as we've gone through.
Commissioner Mazza, in finding, uh, on, in resolution, in the resolution on page two, the general coastal development permit findings, the first one, um, as you've requested in the past, we have made the finding that it conforms to the local coastal program and the Malibu Mu, Municipal Code.
Oh, okay, it's just moved down the line. So, that's, again, that's the question on mansionization, so... My question be, could be, would be, can we determine that a house that is twice the size of the neighborhood meets the, meets the Malibu Municipal Code, which bans mansionization? And that's, that's what I'm gonna base my vote on.
Yeah, we had the same discussion. There was another, um, project, I, I thought it was on the September fourth meeting, but I'm not sure, where we had a similar discussion, where we didn't have it subject to site plan review, but there was, uh, some discussion on sections of the code related to mansionization and such.
That was Selfridge and Porte.
I, I would caution the commission again, as I did at that prior meeting, that we can't rely on the general plan's provisions. They've been implemented through the zoning code, and if, if there's a, a finding, in this case, it's a CDP application, uh, that you cannot make, that's, that's required in order to grant the CDP, you need to explain that basis with substantial evidence in order to deny the application.
Okay, and my question is, if there's... Assume we didn't have a fire, we still have two times in the staff report, a house that's one point eight two times and one point nine six times the average, depending on how you calculate. So, that's, that's the staff's report basis of fact. Now, the municipal code does adopt the general plan into the municipal code. Council made a specific vote on that, um, so it's in there. So, I welcome comments.
The zoning code has specific elements that are put in there to implement the general plan. It is not implementing the entire general plan.
Well, the way I read it, it said it implemented the general plan. Paragraph that said the general, the general plan is adopted, it says, uh, let's see here. Well, that's the general plan, but the, uh...
First one's the municipal code.
Can you read that? My eyes are bad.
I think what John's referring to is, uh, section seventeen oh four oh eight oh, consistency with the general plan in Malibu Municipal Code, says, "An application approved by any review body must be found consistent with the objectives, policies, general land uses, and goals of the Malibu General Plan." And the Malibu General Plan says that all development plans, zoning, subdivision, ordinance, coastal development permits, and conditional use permits of the city are required to be consistent with the general plan. Is that what you're?
That's what I'm, that's, that's what I'm referring to. It's pretty clear. So, and we have the evidence in the file that we got an indication from city council on one, which they reversed, which was not a site, site plan review, as I remember, that they gave the guy an extra twenty percent, but that's different than giving an extra ninety percent.
John, you had a que, you were gonna say something.
Yeah, I, you know, I'm, maybe I'm, of course, I haven't been part of all these discussions that have been going on, mansionization, because I, but I've picked up on them a few times. I'm looking at the nearby residences, and there are, you know, a couple of them bigger than this, and, uh, I'm, I'm not sure if, are we... I, I guess is the general direction from the planning commission today that you can't build anything bigger than maybe ten or twenty percent bigger than the average of the neighborhood? Is that, is that the number you're looking at?
Well, the thing, the thing, this is why I asked Mikey. Please clear this up. The only direction we have, the only direction we have is a council action saying thirty percent's okay, but, you know, sort of, but that's not.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, that's all we have, and that came from the council.
Yep. No, I know, I remember that.
That was, as, as we've discussed in the past, that was a specific action related, on a specific project with, you know, very site-specific conditions in a, in a, in a very particular neighborhood. It, it wasn't, that action, I think it's a mistake to say that that action was taken, in a way that was intended to give the planning commission direction. It was, it was the, the city council acting on one particular application, um, in a very particular neighborhood. So, I mean, what is before you tonight is a, a project with no discretionary requests other than making the general coastal development permit findings and the hazards findings, so I think that's where the focus should be.
Well, my, I think we're in a quandary, because I think the only people that know what they did is the city council.
And we will be...
And, and they have had months to tell us what to do, months.
We, we have been preparing to bring an item back before them. There were, um, a couple of times when we were preparing to get that scheduled, and all of the council members wanted to be present, and that wasn't possible for a little while. At this point, we're, we are planning to bring that back, now that we have the new council seated and everything, so, um, I, we hope to have, you know, specific direction from the council on that shortly, whether it's in the form of a code amendment or, or otherwise.
When you say, when you say shortly, what do you, what do you think shortly? I mean, I know you're, you're flat out, so I'm not trying to...
Yeah, it's a matter of...
I'm just trying to get a sense of...
I mean, it's, it, this, since this is, I mean, this is clearly, uh, an issue that the, the commission, um, tackles every time it has a, a big house in front of it, so, um, I think it's, it's one that we need to get resolved quickly. So, I would, I'll, I'll have to talk with the, uh, city manager and see what else is going on. We've got mid-year budget things coming up as well, um, but I would love to have this done in the early parts of two thousand nineteen, like, maybe by the spring, March, I'm not sure.
Okay, uh, can I ask a question of Trevor? Can we, and this is just can, not will we, uh, can we continue this item for further direction? Because that would be better for the applicant than having a denial and have to go to appeal.
Maybe you wanna ask the applicant how they, how he would feel about a continuance?
And I'll, I'll also clarify, it, there was a similar discussion we had before, and, um, there was a vote three to two, where what was, the decision was to deny the applicant citing MMC seventeen oh two oh, uh, LU Objective two-three, LU Policy two dot three dot two. That's really the, kind of the, where, where, we're just kind of at a, that's the discussion at hand.
And I wanna add, uh, that we denied that house probably three months ago, maybe four, and it hasn't come before the council yet.
Cause October, February.
There was an...
October.
I, I, I think, I think what you're hearing...
It was appealed, and it was, we actually had it scheduled for, um, city council, and there were some meeting cancellations and things due to fire, so we've been trying to get that back to the council.
I know you've been hanging on with this thing since two thousand thirteen, I guess, right? It's one of the last, okay. And I think what we're saying is, there, there is a concern with, you know, I mean, I, I drove down Merritt to take a look at your house, and when I turn off Bush, you know, all of the houses coming in there are around three thousand square feet, twenty-four hundred square feet, twenty-two hundred square feet, and then you start hitting these two biggies, you know, at, at the end. And there's a concern with if that's really what the direction Malibu should take in terms of building these large houses. So, you know, one path says, and I, and I think what we talked about here, is we would like to get some direction from the city council, and there's new city council members right now, who I think we'd like to get, have weigh in on this process. And from your perspective, okay, from an implementation thing, if we deny this, and it's gotta go to, you gotta appeal it to the city council, you got yourself a potentially long haul, okay? I don't know how long that's gonna be. If we postpone it and, and wait to get some direction from the city council... If we postpone it and wait to get some direction from the city council, it may make your path to your final conclusion a whole lot shorter.
Well, let me ask this. The project's been designed to meet all applicable requirements, you know, as laid out by the city council and the planning commission. We meet those requirements now. To, to come back at this stage and say, we're changing everything, we want the house to be no more than three thousand square feet, isn't really fair to my client or, or to anybody else.
I'm not sure that's the answer you're gonna get, all right? I mean, I don't know what the answer's gonna be. I don't think they're gonna make you come back and do a three thousand square foot house.
But, but point being is that we comply with all regulations that have been put forth.
Yeah, well, you do, except for what we were just talking about. It does say in the, in the LIP and the municipal code that you, you have to meet neighborhood standards. You have to be there, you cannot be a mansion in a small neighborhood.
Oh, admittedly, that, the house to the north is, is more than, is more than fourteen hundred square feet larger than, than the proposal here.
Right, but we're not talking neighborhood, and the, the council member that, I mean, the commission member who just left had a probably twenty-three hundred square foot house, a couple doors down that burned down. So that's what the debate is all about, that's why they came up with this thing about averaging. The real problem we have is we've, we've received some direction from the city council, which is very vague. And we've been asking for a resolution. There have been other houses turned down for the same reason, and they're gonna have to go to city council to see what they say. They could say, in the house, in the case of the house that they turned down, as I remember, and these are rough numbers, it was seventy-eight hundred square feet, and they made it forty-two hundred square feet, okay? A similar drop. Now, as Bonnie says, they're all different circumstances and different places and stuff. And our problem has been, they did it, and so we sort of have to follow what the council says, and then they, and we asked for a resolution of that, and they haven't come back yet. Now, as Bonnie says, these are backing up. They have to go to the council, take their time. You gotta submit all this stuff, you gotta notice, you gotta do all this stuff. And it's, I can't speak for the council, but it should be resolved, because we're gonna keep getting houses like this, especially with the fire. But again, we're, we're trying to say, you know, it may be easier to do it by a continuance than by a denial. It may not be. That's dependent on what the council does.
Our intention is to bring the other appeal forward in January, because we had it, had had it previously scheduled, and then that got postponed. So at this point, we're...
Do you know which meeting in January? Because it may, you may want to see what the ruling is on that. We could continue this until the meeting, the planning commission meeting following that appeal.
Or the applicant may choose to take a denial and...
Well, we don't know if it's a denial at this point. You can, you can request the, the council, the commission make its decision, or you could request a continuance to the date after this appeal on a very similar project that was denied by the commission, another clean sheets project that was denied by the commission in a similar circumstance, if you want to see the, the council's ruling on that before they rule on this item.
So you're looking at delay for a couple of months?
Well, it would be, it would be a month and a half, maybe? What would be the next commission meeting after the council hears the appeal?
It would...
I understand your issue. I mean, I know, I understand the frustrations.
Well, my client would like to retire into this house.
I'm, I'm sure.
And at the rate this is going, I, I don't think he's going to live that long.
The, the, we, this is tentative at this point, but we're looking at January twenty-eighth for the, the other items. So the other option would be if you let the planning commission, you know, ask the planning commission, commission to make a decision right now, then we would get this scheduled for an appeal before the city council, and then it would be before the city council to make a, a decision. There, they, they may provide some, you know, inkling of what their direction would, or their decision would be on your project when they act on this other application, but, but we don't know that. And when they make a decision on the neighborhood character issue, we don't know whether that will take the form of a code amendment or, or some other kind of thing that might not go into effect right away.
And we will use whatever the, you know, the, the result we get from the city council when they look at this new project, we will use that as guidance to deal with this one. Okay, I can give you that assurance, so.
You mean at the ruling on the appeal, right?
Right. Well, the, the thing that's frustrating is that the project was previously approved.
Yeah, different city, different planning commission.
In this form. And, you know, if you, engineering is done, everything is done. It was all ready to go save for civil engineering. So again, to ask us to go back and, you know, potentially redesign everything is...
We haven't asked you that yet. I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to be wise guy.
Agreed, but...
I'm just saying, you know, you may get a good, a good answer from the city council at the end of January.
All right, well, let's, let's roll the dice and then, and continue it then and see, see what happens.
Okay.
Okay, so I, should I make a motion to continue to a date uncertain, or?
Why don't you make, you want to make it to a motion to, uncertain, okay, date uncertain, but, but Bonnie will endeavor to set it as soon as possible after the city council rules on...
End of January.
The Selfridge project.
I'll second that.
And hopefully, Bonnie, they do more than just do one house. They tell us what to do.
Catherine may have a roll call.
Vice Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Seibert?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Chair Euring?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I move we adjourn.
Second?
Aye.
Everybody have a great Christmas, good holiday, stay safe, thank you.
The more things change, the more stay the, stay the same?
Yeah.